All right, lights, camera, action. We would like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. We are starting the meeting at 6:06, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here and everybody that's on Zoom checking out the meeting to get informed about what's going on in their town. We will start with Citizens' input. If there's anybody that has any thoughts or concerns about what's on the agenda for tonight that would like to speak or ask a question? No hands?
No hands.
And nobody here. All right, so we will move on to Administration. Thanksgiving offices will be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Also, it was posted that the transfer station will be closed Thursday for Thanksgiving so that they can appreciate the day with their loved ones. Next, we will move on to the staff reports for 2024. We will start with Mary Jo for the Town Clerk and the Tax Collector, please.
Hello. Who do you want to start with?
You're called, ma'am.
All right, it's good, Tax Collector first. All right, my increases are exactly what I asked for last year. We didn't get them, so I'm asking for again. It's training and travel. I need more money for training, totally take certification classes. We both going to conferences, and we're traveling more so. During COVID, we didn't need the money. Now we need the money, so I'm asking for more money for traveling and training. The other one is my line item for my salary. I get $10,000 a year as Tax Collector. That's been $10,000 a year since 2007. I've never increased in my pay at all, ever. I also get fees. Fees, tax collector fees are minimal. That doesn't even add up to $1,000 a year. I just would like to see if I can get that up another $5,000. I could leave today, take any job in the state of New Hampshire as Tax Collector at 60 grand, easy. So 15 isn't that much to ask for, and that's my budget for tax collecting.
In terms of the, actually, because, you know, this is a question for everybody. Like you just said, you asked for this and did not get it.
Yeah.
Are you concerned about what's going to happen the next few months?
There are things in here that have not reflected in my budget, like computer line on both. You'll see it even on the Town Clerk. These line items haven't been touched. The money's not there, right? I already spent this money. I know what I've spent. I am not really going to be in any trouble, but I am over-expending my travel and training lines. So I can keep over-expending it, or we can try to raise them, and I won't over-expend.
Yeah, I think where I was going with this is, we're telling other department heads to run a deficit, basically, for illustration purposes.
Yep.
And then we're going to have to figure it out as we get closer to the end as to if we're going to have to move money around, you know, department to department, but, but...
Well, pretty much by the end of the year, this is probably, that year-to-date variance is probably going to be spent.
Yeah.
Because not all the money is in here, and we still have another month of my salary and Tony's and everything else to go. So this is probably going to be spent, or very close to it, spent. But, I mean, I know we go by bottom lines. If we had to take money and put it up here and move this down here, that's fine. Just I don't want those line items being in the red. They don't go in the red.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the draft Tax Collector Budget for Inclusion, the overall Town Draft.
Seconded by Jo. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
So, just did some side math. So you're going to use that 10 that's sitting there now. If I do my math correctly, you probably another 10 in the deficit.
I honestly don't. I don't know. Like I said, there's money in here. I know it's spent. I'm going to get, I might come out right level. I don't know. I don't know because I don't really know what's in there. These are not true, these are not accurate expenditures.
Okay.
I don't know of a however else to answer that question. I don't, don't know. What's left? Okay, Sophie, the, yeah. At least $3,500 will be gone because that's Tony's pay, plus more because she had an increase that wasn't, it's not in the default, so, yeah. This is, it'll either be wiped out or even less than what it is.
So, you have, you're talking about Tony's pay as deputy tax collector?
Yep.
So what's the pay?
She gets $10,000. The way, the way it's worked, because I have a combined office.
Yep.
Why these budgets are separate is beyond me because we're combined. Everything is together. So when I was deputy, I received, I had like five or $6,000 under Tax Collector, and the rest was in my hourly wage. Every time I would get an increase, they would, they increased it a little bit on both sides. It was very hard to determine how much of this is for tax and how much of this is for Collector. It's one pay. So, a few years ago, when I had Cheryl as my deputy and the increases were coming, I couldn't put that she was making more money as Tax Collector than I was. So we are both sitting deputy and Tax Collector at 10 grand. All increases to the deputy go on the Town Clerk's side unless we start combining these two, which, I don't know. I don't, this is how it's been done from the beginning of time. I just follow along with it.
No, I know you don't like it. I'd like to keep them separate, but I get that it's, I get that.
It's difficult.
But I like to keep it separate so we just have an idea.
And that's fine, too. That's fine, too. So just know that that's how that's going to sit.
And I guess when you said that that salary line will be overspent, I was, because of the default, I'm asking why, I guess, because it says we put in 10 grand in it. So is she getting paid more than 10 grand? Because that's what I'm getting at. If she's getting paid 11...
Okay, well, if you, once you get to the Town Clerk, you're going to see her line item for salary is gone. So once that's gone, they start hitting the Tax Collector line.
Sure, okay.
It's not enough in there to cover it because the increase isn't in there because of default. So that's going to go below that 10. It can, we can stop it at 10 and start taking it out of the Town Clerk so it comes out of there. It all depends on how the bookkeeper wants to apply it.
Right, right. So, okay.
So, I mean, once that hits, she hits that 10 grand, I'll tell her, start taking it out of the Town Clerk so you're showing the deficit over there.
Right, because that's the part that's going to be the deficit, is the Town Clerk's side, not the, that's what I needed to know.
Gotcha.
So this side, so this side's not going to be in a deficit.
Nah, but you're going to be straight down.
Because it's at 10, I get it.
It's at 10, yeah.
But this other side would reflect her raise that she got, and we're in a default. That's fine. So is that 37, I know we're jumping to the next budget, but is that 37 representative of what her raise was?
Where am I? Oh, deputy. What's the question again?
Is that 37.9 representative of what her raise was last year?
Where are we looking at?
I jumped to your...
Oh, you jumped over to the other one. Sorry. Thank you.
What do you want?
Hold on. Deputy, deputy, deputy. No, that is not. That is with, with her increase and with her additional increase.
That's what I was getting at. Okay.
That's an additional. No, that's an additional.
Okay.
Can we move it on to the next one?
Yeah.
We accepted that one.
Okay, all right. So, we're done. All right. So, the Election and Registration and Vital Statistics Budget for the Town Clerk. It's a very long department.
What's the name of the tab? I think I'm missing it.
Election, Registration, and...
Yeah, the name of the tab's different from the name of the...
It's Town Clerk.
It might be Town. She might have put it under Town Clerk. I don't know what she put it under.
I don't have a Town Clerk, though.
Yeah, you don't.
So it's this one, right?
Elections.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
All right. This is a little tougher, all right? I have, again, the two, Training and Travel, that I asked for last year and did not get. That's up. My issue this year is going to be with elections. Okay, I have four elections because of election laws and all the new things that need to be done, and especially with the presidential primary. I'm going to need at least 10 workers. They make $10.12 an hour. If we keep that, I'm still, I'm going to be short money in that budget to pay them at the $10.12 an hour. $10.12 an hour for sitting in that building for 12-plus hours is really sad. I wanted to increase it to maybe 15 an hour. Maybe I could get people to want to do this instead of begging them to do this. If so, then it would increase by $9,000. If not, I have to have that line item at $6,072 to cover 10 workers for four elections next year. That's why that's there. That's why that's up. Okay. For the new guys, Dan, Jo, the majority of my Town Clerk budget is wash items. It's money in, money out. I collect it, it comes in, it goes back out, it gets paid back out again. So I estimate on a lot of my amounts. Anything for the state, mostly everything with the exception of postage, supplies, travel, training, and salaries is all estimated. I try to estimate it based on what I'm doing this year to next year. So the ones that I increased last year that we didn't get, and the ones I decreased last year that we didn't get are still the same. So I'm still asking for, I look at what I'm doing, I'm looking what I did last year, and I'll either up it or decrease it one way or another because I don't always need what I put in because I don't, it's, like I said, it's in and it's out. That's why those look the way they do. I don't typically touch those at all. They, they pretty much stay the same. Deputy Town Clerk, that increase is a lot, but that is after doing, right now, both associations, Tax Collector Association and the Town Clerk's Association, are doing a wage study. It is not completed yet, but we do have preliminaries. The majority, and I'm going to say, for, the majority of the towns, for the Town Clerk, they have at least three people in their office waiting on the customers. I have two, I've always had two. Most have three, some have four. These are smaller towns than Newton. Some are bigger towns than Newton, but comparably, they have more people in our office. We do a lot of work downstairs. This past year and a half, our workload has exploded. We're covering a lot of things to do down there. I'm asking a lot more of my help to get things done for the town. I wanted, you can see where I would like to increase her to. That brings her in line with the majority of the deputies in the state. I have, now, if you want comparisons, Deputy Town Clerk Collectors Combined in Belmont, top pay is $56,000. Thornton, that has a smaller population than ours, their starting rate is what Tony makes now. That's their starting rate, and they have better benefits. Northfield, their starting salary is $48,000. Rye, $63.5. They have three assistants in their office, and their deputy makes $63.5. They're combined. Not combined, if you're not combined. Atkinson, she's just a deputy Town Clerk, she makes $40,000 a year. They're not combined, that's all they do. And they have four people in their office. Hampstead, they do separate their pays. They pay them as clerk, they pay them as Collector. Their deputy makes, as clerk, $55,000, as Tax Collector, $52,000. We are sadly, sadly, underpaid. Tony can actually, she's got eight years' experience. I've had her for three. She was five in Rye. So she's eight years. To hire somebody, you can't do that in our position. It's, it's not, this is not something you go to college for and learn. You actually go to a specialty certification class once you're hired, which is what she's doing. The only way you learn is to be, excuse me, be in that office, and you're showed what to do, how to do it, when to do it. You shadow for 30 days. You go for training one week at least per department. So your, your person doesn't even get to start for at least two months. So you have an experienced and an extremely smart person downstairs that I hope within three years will be ready to take over for me because I'm not here for long. So that is my request to pay her. She, I have jumped her up to get at least on par with our surrounding communities.
Was that a subtle hint?
Yes. Subtle? Take it however you want to take it.
Throwing that out there to everybody.
Exactly.
Throwing it out there. It's, it's been a rough, rough year and a half downstairs.
I think, I think what you're saying, you're preaching to the choir here. I think you, you know this. Essentially, you're telling...
Yeah, I'm telling you guys. I know you're listening, Diane and Tony, who's up on the screen.
As, as I said in previous meetings, I'll say it again, plenty of good seats available here while we're talking about the...
And when the time comes, I will preach it out there, too.
Exactly, but I wanted to throw something out there at you. Have you given any thought to adding another head?
I would rather not. For, add another head, I have nowhere to put them. Where are they going to go? In the closet? Okay, I have no room for them. I have no desk, I have no room for them. I would rather take that, give it to Tony. You value another person? That's, just, that's a whole new ballgame. That's more money. If you're going to hire someone, I'd rather you give it to the assistant because we can handle that job. It's just we, I think the compensation needs to change.
Fair enough.
Any questions? Matt?
Well, now that I have my mic on, I'm going to make a motion to accept the draft Town Clerk Proposed Budget for Inclusion and the overall proposed budget.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
All right. Are you good?
Unanimous? Thank you, MJ.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Rich Kane. He's providing supervising administrative services at the PD while we're in the recruitment mode. He'll be here and working as if he's full-time, in place, giving it all he's got. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Rich Kane.
Talk a little bit about Small World. Jim, I'd like to tell you that we actually graduated high school together in Devon, Mass. A long time ago.
That's funny because you look a lot younger.
He tells me that all the time. What I'm giving you right now is, we did a little update on our budget today. Myself and Katrina.
Thank you.
Katrina is the administrative assistant at the PD, and without her, to be perfectly honest with you, we wouldn't have those forms right there, so, thank you. We've done quite a bit of work on the budget. I just let you know, this is my third week here. I've been here about 30 hours so far, maybe a couple more. Katrina and I have spent quite a bit of time trying to get this budget ready for you today. So we're still trying to wrap our arms around it, to be perfectly honest with you, on some of the, some of the items. So tonight, I'd really welcome any questions that you have. I'll tell you, this is my approach on the budget. I'm pretty much trying to keep it the same or as close to what we spent in 2023. There's some areas in the budget that I'm not sure how the number was arrived at, but what I've, I've done so far is just to try to balance what was budgeted, what our expenses are, and what we truly need to run the PD. I've asked, I'm going to ask tonight to consolidate some of the ACO line items just to make it a little bit easier. You'll see it in one of the, one of the, the lines that goes up significantly, but it's only because we've, we've put four into one. The majority of our line items have stayed either level, at level funding, or some of them have gone down. I'm prepared to go over that and highlight the ones you wanted. If you have any questions on it, we can go quickly through them all, and if you have any questions on that, we can, we can do it. The budget's gone up $35,547. That's a 3.9% increase over 2023, and that can be attributed to just like two or three line items in the entire budget. I truly have only asked what I think the department needs to run a professional police With that being said, we can, if you want to start on the line item on ammunition, we can go down, and I can, if you'd like, I'll give you a brief real quick on them. I, I haven't changed that line item at all, so that's stated zero. The next one is the first one you're going to see in the Animal Control line item. It's money that we've put away to board the animals that are picked up. It's gone down 100% because I want to move it into another account, so, and we'll get to those. Community outreach is a, it's a new account. It's where we can do some work with the community, i.e. deer, coffee with a cop, trying to get the guys out in the community a little bit more. So I put in a few dollars in there just to try to get that particular line item going. The Comfort Dog is the next line item. That's the dog that's with the SRO, and I'm not exactly how long they've had that dog, but this is the year we have to take over some of the expenses. In the past, there's been some donations and people helping out when they first brought the dog in, but I, I opened that account, I put $2,000 in it. I have no idea what we might spend. Could be food, could be vet bills, something like that, but, so that's a brand-new line item. Computers is the next one. It's gone up 44%. Sounds like a lot. It's gone up $2,000, but we are in need, under that, the computer, we have the need of one new PC, and we have some Kalia, which is the accreditation software for the policies at the PD. We have to budget a little bit more money in that account. Copy of contracts stayed the same. Cremation and disposal, it's gone down 100, but that's another ACO area. Dues and subscriptions, I went through the line items that we've spent. I lowered that based on a couple that we don't need anymore. The next three in a, in a row are all level funded. That's equipment lease, that's a copy machine, equipment purchase, and some custodial expenses at the PD. Divals stay level funded, and I'm certain I can get by with what's in there. We reduced the IT account just a little based on usage. In the next four, office supplies, some random expenses, postage and radio are all level funded. Recruiting, it's gone up 73%. Sounds like a lot, again. It's gone up by $1,100. If things go the way they are right now, we're going to have to hire two new people next year. We're down one, and, actually, we're down two, counting the chief's position. So those costs covers things like psychological testing, polygraph testing, and a medical test. Those all cost the PD some, some money.
So, is it two offices plus the chief, or did you put the chief into, did it's two plus one, or two?
Two.
Okay.
I have one full-time patrol position that's open, and the chief's position is open.
Thank you.
We can go over some of the salary items if you want to. Those are where we took the majority of our hits. ACO salary, that's just what, the 2.5% is what I believe they gave, it's from last year. So we just hired a brand-new ACO, Animal Control Officer, and that's what the pay was. The next line item is the Administrative Assistant. I need more room up there. So this is what I've done with all the salaries in trying to get them somewhat where they're either supposed to be or have an idea what I'm telling you that we're spending the money on. I took, for the Administrative Assistant, I went through five surrounding towns, and I took the, and I took the average salary of a full-time Administrative Assistant. I only used the towns that were comparable to Newton in population. So this is 4,000, or a couple, a couple hundred either way. The average pay for an Administrative Assistant was $30.33. It, they're mostly comparable to the, the size of our PDs and the duties of the, the assistant, and it actually comes from a statewide matrix done by the New Hampshire Police, Police Chief Association, so it's pretty up-to-date information. So based on that, I, I increased that line item 25, $2,535. That's where you see the increase on your seat. It's in front of you. Usually salaries will generate some questions. If I'm going too fast, or if you have anything, feel free to stop me, and I'll answer them the best I can. Salary and the chief, it's gone up because I use the salary that's in the bid for the chief's job right now, so I just put it in there at $100,000. Court time I reduced. The amount of time the officers spend in court now is almost insignificant due to some pleases and other things that happen in the court system, so I reduced it based on usage. We hadn't used any. We had 2,000, so I, I dropped it by 1,000. Full-time salaries, that's, that's the biggest line item in the budget. That's for seven full-time officers, counting the open position, which I've budgeted for. I came up with the figure of $480,000, which is nearly $7,000 from last year. Using the same matrix that I used for Katrina's position, I was also able to use that police officer's position. And based on that, I came up with what a lieutenant, what the average lieutenant makes, what the average sergeant makes, and what the average patrolman makes. I just took that hourly salary, multiplied it out, and the total came to $480,625. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'm not really sure where the $487 came from, from last year's default budget, but I am absolutely confident in the $480,000, and that will give the officers a raise.
So, something I might mention, as kind of being the old-timer up here, is, what it might be is the School Resource Officer. Is everybody familiar with how that's paid out? Did you...
20 split.
Yeah, so, so it's, we kind of advance the salary, right? So typically what we're doing, and somebody can correct me if I've got this all wrong, but we had to put the salary into our salary line item, and then what would happen at the end of the year? And in last year, he was only on the job for like three months before that warrant, so I don't believe we had the warrant article to do it last year. So what we would be doing this year is putting out a warrant article that would have zero tax impact, that we would ask the voters to take his salary for the year and take it out of the revolving fund and apply it to the salary line item of the Police Department. So, if that...
And that works.
I would point out that in last year's budget that was approved...
I would point out that, um, in last year's budget that was approved, the entire cost of the SRO appeared in the police budget.
Right, right.
That's the gross budgeting aspect that you have to do. You can't do anything in the net because you may not get the revenue that you were promised. So because there was a hundred percent consideration in the operating budget, there was no need for a warrant article. But the community needs to know that we paid twenty percent of the, the dollar value with all the roll-ups. That's health insurance, uh, retirement, and, uh, the eighty percent of that value comes from the school, but it goes nowhere but the revenue account. You can't spend revenues. It goes right in the revenue account, strict mouth accounting.
And, and thank you for reminding me. So that's, that's kind of the advice we got from DRA, right? Right before we went to warrant? So that's why it wasn't on the warrant? Does that sound?
Yeah, but it was me, not the DRA.
So it was you, so? So I, I guess I'm wrong. So strike what I said. I was thinking maybe that was the, the difference.
So the, the question I'm going to have for you, um, with seven FTE, uh, as, at the officer level, you're comfortable with that covering twenty-four, seven, seven days a week?
With, I'm sorry, with, if we're fully staffed with the chief?
When we're fully staffed with the chief.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable. It would be six full-time guys that would cover, um, twenty-four hours a day, mixed in with the part-time people. What's really important is to fill some of those gaps.
Right.
So I have not put in for an, an additional officer in this budget. Uh, maybe this is a time that that will happen, if you grow. But right now, I, I'm okay with the number that we have. Especially if we can keep the part-timers active, absolutely. We have six part-timers that work, that take shifts, so it's, we're in pretty good. And once you go full, but once you get fully staffed, now you can start using them to fill some of the gaps, just to give you a little extra coverage, like on a Friday, Saturday night, whatever.
Sure.
So on the full-time officer line item, that's, um, and I know this will be a draft, so, um, that's giving the officers a raise in, in each of their, um, their rank level. I've already done it, and at some point, we can, we can talk about that if you'd like. But, um, that's, again, and that brings you really up to the level of the police departments that are around us, that, that are comparable to the town of Newton. Salary for part-time officers has gone up a little bit because, again, I did the exact same thing with that matrix. Get you guys into the ballpark of knowing why you're paying them, what you're paying them. Is it's, it's the average across the state of New Hampshire. It's the average about the population. Um, so it's, I think it's a good way to do business, is to, is to, is pay them where they need to belong. So that one went up a little based on that. There was, there's some significant lower-paid part-time offices in, in the town of Newton. The next line, I, I'm sorry, I know that's, there's a big numbers. Is there any questions on the salary?
No, no, it's landed.
The next item is the ACO supplies. So that's where I put them all. That's why it looks, it's gone up a hundred and sixty percent. The entire budget's thirteen hundred dollars, but I just consolidated four into one for a total of thirteen hundred dollars, and that's what those line items were. I, I just think it's easier for whoever's doing the budgeting, whoever's paying the bills, we, we'll be able to track that a little better. The telephone, uh, line item's gone up ninety-one percent. Um, I, I believe you understand what, this was a bill that was being paid for by a revolving account before, and now it's not. So now it's entirely in the police department budget. That covers a lot of items for the department, but, um, we are now, that's exactly what it's costing you to, to run the telephone part of the business in, in the PD. That includes the mobiles, Verizon, Comcast, uh, the, the thing, the, um, the service that runs the laptops in the, in the cars, so it covers it all now. Tests and vaccine is another one I rolled into that ACO account. Someone can tell me what the next two mean, because I really don't know. Town police details, full-time and part-time. It appears we do the work.
Isn't that for the elections?
Yes, that's what it looks like to me. So I'm not exactly sure how that's all working, but, uh, it's in the budget.
That stuff was put aside, if I remember correctly, this was put aside because of the, of the details that are required during election.
There's, there's no doubt that that's what it is, is that we send guys for the election.
Right.
And we bill you for that, and then I pay it. So that's, that's a great deal for somebody, certainly not us. It's a couple of thousand dollars that we do every year, so. Uh, the next three accounts are pretty big ones, but have leveled, uh, funded all of them. That's training for the officers, absolute, absolute must. Yep. In this day and age, you cannot cut that, you cannot undercut it. They have to go. And the longer I stay, the more training they are going to. It's kind of fallen off too much. Uh, travel, I believe, and Katrina can help me, that was the chief's travel?
It's just travel in general.
Okay. Uniform account, um, I, I kept it all level funded. Vehicle leases. So currently, we have three leases out, three different cars. One will come up in two thousand and twenty-four. One will come up in twenty-four, two will come up in twenty-five. Never buy, never lease another vehicle. At the end of two thousand and twenty-five, that account would be zero. You wouldn't have to spend any money on it. That's certainly not going to happen as you go to replace cars. Whether you lease it, I think, is the decision that you make, whether you buy it or lease it. But, so, those are absolute figures from Ford. That's exactly what it's going to cost, uh, the town in the next three years.
Well, um, we did outright purchase two new Cruisers, correct, that are coming in? I believe then they're not leased, or one?
Everything's in but one.
We, we only went ahead with the one?
No, everything in the end that you authorized, except one that isn't.
All that's in, we're waiting for one to come in, the others?
Still one being worked on up, uh, at the factory. So, but yes, the answer is yes, you authorize payment on those vehicles.
So with that assessment, with those coming in, do we have too many vehicles so when those leases erupt, that we can just?
I, I think you take an absolute look at how many cars you have, to be honest with you. Generally, police departments have some sort of rotation that goes on.
Yep.
Bottom one ends up going out. You give it to another department here in town, or someone that doesn't use it as much. Or you sell it, or you trade it in for a new one, whatever it is you're trying to do. You are, at some point, going to be able to do that. There's, there's quite a few vehicles there. Some of them are a little rugged, but, um, most of them are in pretty good shape. So you can definitely, you can definitely do that as, you, you really should get yourself on a rotation.
Right.
Two one year, one the next, one this year, whatever it might be. You really need to get on a rotation. It just makes it easier to budget, and you can look down the road and say, all right, you know, three years and that one's out. So I, I would highly recommend coming up with that, and I don't think it's been done a little bit.
Right.
So.
Plus it saves on maintenance and other items.
Yeah, if you move them. Hopefully it will reduce your maintenance costs at some point in the game, where you're not keeping them for a hundred and sixty thousand miles. And generally, as you know, I mean, those are hard miles.
Right.
They're running constantly, so you, you really want to, you want to get them out before it starts costing you some money.
So chief, with that said, would you be recommending, uh, put money into a capital reserve program for down the road?
Oh, that's a, I mean, that's a great question. But that Jim's going to answer, as a matter of fact.
Last year's warrant, um, at the request of the police chief, money was added to the police cruiser and equipment capital reserve fund. It exists. The balance as of September is seventy thousand dollars. So, um, that's a resource that was designed, I'm sure, to not make huge hits to the PD budget, causing a, a spike that won't be ongoing.
Right.
So it exists.
Yeah, and it can, can be used for maintenance, if you want to just do maintenance, or if you want to outright purchase.
Well, the fact that you have it is, is good, and I don't know who decides what kind of money. I would say if you're trying to get ahead of the game, put some money in there every year, like a savings account, and when you need it, you'll need it. I can certainly look at that for you and see how we're doing.
All right, looking good, thank you.
That's all the accounts that I have. I'm sorry, we have one with vehicle maintenance. I added an additional five thousand dollars to this account. There is absolutely no doubt that you need to do this. You need to fix the cars, you need to keep them running, you got to stay on top of them. It's one of your highest liability areas that either something breaks when you're trying to work, or whatever it might be, but that's the spot. And you've got to have a, a good program in place to get the cars fixed. Uh, right now, I think it's a little shaky, to be honest with you. Um, that's one of the things I've done with the guys down there now. I've assigned some in just the vehicles, that's your job, I want them fixed. I want them get out there and, uh, and you got to stay on top of all the little stuff. It's a big account, but it's, uh, it will save you in the end. So I added a little money to that account. So it's gone up. It's three point nine percent. I like standing tight, I mean, I don't pay taxes here, but I think that's a relatively, uh, even number for a budget as big as this. You know, we're, we're approaching a million-dollar budget for the PD now, so, um, it's gone up thirty-five thousand dollars. And if there's any questions, uh, Katrina can answer them all, and I will just stand.
I was going to say, I have a question, and I'm sure Katrina's going to have to answer it, not you. Eight dollars in postage?
Oh.
You haven't mailed anything? Or is it just not in that line?
No, I, when I was in control, there was a ton of stamps.
Oh, okay. So it's one of those things?
Yeah, I will have to go probably this season, well, this hard season, but I haven't had to do that yet.
Okay.
Say it, Dan, you know you want to say it.
You just get a Pitney Bowes machine.
He loves the, he loves the Pitney Bowes machine.
You don't need to go to the post office and buy stamps.
I agree.
And it saves money and time. And, yeah. Seriously. It's twenty twenty-three, this is ridiculous.
So with that said, let me ask a question, because I don't know. If the town were to go to a, a system like that, do we get discounts if we have multiple departments using them?
You get a discount on postage, period.
Okay, period, okay, good.
So you lease the machine?
Exactly.
Probably something we should look at, town-wide.
All right, well, we can talk about that later. We're on the budget right now.
That made me say.
Thank you for your fairness.
You were trying to be coy about it.
Thank you for the, your fairness, the two of you. We appreciate it.
But let me just add, just kind of a button on this. And I'm kind of talking, I'm not talking to you. Talking to the people out there is, what we just heard, and we've actually been hearing the last few weeks with all of this stuff, is we're, we're trying to stretch these buck budgets to, to get to a, a, a source of reality, right? And, and you just gave us a reflection of what the competitive, uh, what the competitive salaries would be. Because we've talked about it ad nauseam in this room, is, uh, you know, these officers are in high demand. So, uh, last year, essentially what the town told us last year is we didn't want to give any raises to any of our officers last year. So we're asking the town to, to try to do that again. And, and maintenance is up, all of these things, uh, I'll say it again. Inflation is not unique to just what's happening to you at home. It's, or at any of the businesses you work at, it's happening to the towns as well. So that, that's why you're seeing three point nine percent increase, which is just the reality, so.
And to sum up, part of what Matt said, we've been up here, um, part of that, the salaries that we've been talking about, is that there is a war in the state of New Hampshire taking place from each town to retain police officers, firefighters, um, office people, administrators, all of that. Every, every aspect of the town municipalities are at war with one another to get qualified people to fill the positions, to do the work. And if we don't pay them, somebody else is going to pay them. And that's the God's honest truth. And you, the, the old, um, adiom, Matt, you get what you pay for? Well, it's, that's what we're talking about.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
You got something else to say, Matt?
Good. How about a motion to accept the draft, uh, proposed police department budget for inclusion in the overall proposed budget?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that would be unanimous. Thank you again. Uh, we will move on to Mr. Povero, the road agent. How you doing, Mike?
I'm sure he's.
He's chomping.
Good news for us.
I like how you segue right into that. Good evening, board, Mike Povero, road agent. Well, you've got my proposed budget. I don't see it up there yet, but.
It's coming.
Okay. So mine's not as gentle as the other ones were. My proposed increase is forty percent. It hasn't changed much since a year ago, when I stood at this podium. The only items that have increased, and we'll go through each one of them, but the only ones that have actually increased from last year's proposal that did not pass, to this year, is I increased the salaries higher, and I finally got internet and phone. I know. Everybody calm down. So that was the increase from this year to last year's proposed. Now, I'm saying proposed because last year's proposed didn't pass, as we painfully know. Um, I'll go through the items as I did last year, the ones that were the biggest increase. Uh, equipment rentals. The rentals didn't go up from last year, but the operating costs for all of the rental equipment has increased dramatically. Fuel, all the other stuff that's hidden in there. And as I go through this, please, help me sell this, if, if you guys see something I'm not pointing out as we're going through this, because I'm hoping that the five of you guys understand my pain. It's more the residents that are going to vote for this, is really where I think we're, we have the stumbling stone. Uh, winter equipment, those rates have gone up. And as the chief said a few minutes ago, and Bob said, if we don't pay a competitive rate to the subcontractors and the employees, they're going someplace else. So two years ago, I couldn't get any plow drivers. They're not coming here making twenty or twenty-two dollars less an hour than surrounding towns are paying them. As much as they like me, they're not coming here. Got to be competitive.
And you have the added thing, maybe you're going to say the same thing, is Massachusetts?
Well, Mass even, yeah, Mass even matters worse.
I'm going to never mind that. I'm going to add this, people, that the state of New Hampshire, even with the money that they pay the plow drivers, they got thirteen trucks and six drivers for those thirteen trucks. So to put somebody in those seats isn't easy to begin with, let alone not offering them what they're worth, to come out in the middle of a storm to plow the roads in those hazardous conditions.
And that's a good point. And even Mass has got all their bulletin boards for the past month, six weeks, looking for plow drivers, and they pay substantially more than we pay, so it's across the board. So those rates went up last year to retain the people that we have, and we've been able to do that. So we stopped the bleeding, at, at least at that point. The next increase is going to be paving. I think that's the hot button, for the most part, residents in town. And not to bore you guys with it, because it's my position. I can't begin to tell you how many residents call during the summer, or the entire season, when you get into my road. My road's terrible. I could just play it on a revolving message. Extremely frustrating for me. I know what it takes to do it, I know what it takes to repair it, but if we don't have the financing and funding, it's just a big circle.
My question is, did we even go up enough on that, Mike?
Probably not, but I have to start someplace. I mean, I asked for that same amount last year. I mean, I asked for that same amount last year. And didn't get it. It's a valid question, and I'll go through that, and well, let's go through it now, while we're on the paving item, I'll go through the paving item now. So, right now, in town, roads that are deficient, which the rating on those roads are clearly not accessible, acceptable, do not pass, they are deficient, right? The dollar amount on that right now is $2.2 million. That's right now, that's not after the season, that's as we're having this meeting, is $2.2 million of roads in town that are deficient. Based upon what I have for funding to work with every year, right now, that's $135,000, $135,000 on paving, that's $80,000 on a block grant that I use every year, and it's $55,000 on a line item for paving. With those funds and deficient roads right now, it's going to take me 17.5 years to fix. I don't know which camera's looking at me, but I'll wave at it. I won't be here in 17.5 years, that I can assure you, so that problem won't be mine. Problem is, these roads are deteriorating faster than I can get to them, mathematically. And I get the calls, and I know a lot of residents out there were frustrated, but there's only few that want to come here and voice their frustration. I mean, this year alone, if you look at the coal patch item, one guy, I help Ronnie when I can, but one guy, my budget for materials gravel, roadside gravel and coal patch is $7,500. Ronnie spent $14,000 on patching holes. There's something wrong with that proportion, too.
Yeah. And going back to what you said, it takes 17 and a half years to catch up with what's already wrong.
Right now.
And then, and then now envision that 17 and a half years and trying to take care of what's wrong now, but in that 17 and a half years, all the other roads in town are going to crap out, because we've been busy trying to fix and repair the ones that are already damaged, which is going to end up multiplying and making this whole predicament even worse than it already is.
Yeah, there's a life expectancy on a road.
Correct.
20 to 25 years, you have to do something. Now, there's a whole science to roads, which is called pavement preservation. In order to keep your roads in shape, that's not even in this budget number. That's a whole science that, as you get to a road that's starting to basically fail, centerline cracking, shoulder maintenance, stuff like that, you can maintain that road's life longer if you can do the preservation. We don't even have any value, people, or anything else to do that. It needs to go in place at some point in time, but that's not even on this page. We're just looking to stop the major failure of roads. I'm going to, I'm going to go to this at the end of the meeting, on this pavement end, which is going to be maybe a proposed warrant that we put in, so we'll talk about this at the end, but we'll get through the whole budget first, before we get segwayed into that.
Is there any other state money that you can go after? There's nothing, right? So.
No, the highway block grant is real yet. I mean, you can get specific stuff, Tristan and I are working on a grants or relief from storm damage. I got a bridge grant last year
Right.
To repair part of Wilders Grove.
Yep.
There are specific ones, but I've never seen ones that will come out and give you money to maintain a road that you should be maintaining already. I haven't seen one.
Okay.
And you were talking about the patch work, and how much you spent?
Yeah, I mean, it was, you know, we've just, we've doubled my allotment on patching material, and to be quite honest with you, you guys drive around, residents drive around it, I think there's probably still 30% that I never got to this year, that are, you know, minor, they're small. The problem with that small hole?
Gets bigger.
Yeah, with the time, water gets in it, freezes, pops it, that hole will multiply by four or five times by spring.
And that's a testament, again, to how bad the roads are getting.
Yeah.
Because we're not keeping up with them.
Yeah.
So if we don't pay upfront to fix the roads, we're going to pay additionally to try to just make them drivable.
And the cost every year, I shouldn't say every year, but if you average it out over, say, 20 years, the cost of doing stuff 10 years ago is, was much less than it is to do now. So that's not a direct correlation. If we keep kicking the can down the road, it will get more expensive.
Yep.
We good on the pavement part of it? I mean, I could go on and on.
I think we made our point.
Yeah. And I, again, I believe you guys understand it, because we talk about it, but to try to get this to the residents is, it is difficult.
Yep.
The next big bump, paving was really the biggest one. Then we have the salaries. So, the salary issue is an employee issue. And I think every department, and I'm going to jump right on suit, that was here before me, has talked about employees and salaries. We are finding painfully that Newton is behind the curve on most of our pay rates here. I have one, one highway employee, that's to maintain 52 miles of road. I've said this at this podium before, I'll say it again, not only is it ridiculous, but it's unsafe, truly.
Yep.
The guy working out there, the motor in public by himself, is just wrong. I have a line item budget of $75,000. We'll burn $64,000 of it this year. I desperately have to get another town employee to work with Ronnie. So, in order to do that, I've bumped the budget, you know, proposed budget on salaries to $120,000. Bob, you asked me a little while ago, was the paving enough? I don't think that's enough, either. But I have to start somewhere. So that's only to bring one more town employee on board. Chief did it, I think we have to do it as an exercise. The surrounding towns that are equal or smaller than us, our highway departments have anywhere between four and nine guys. That's their staff. Their budgets, two of the towns have 38 miles of road, both their budgets are north of $1 million. We have 52 miles of road on 405. Their paving line item is more than my whole operating budget, and I have more miles of road. I hope, I hope you're understanding my frustration.
You're preaching to the choir.
I understand I am, but it's, it's painful, it's painful.
I was personally thinking that that paving should have went up $100,000 on top of the 55 that's already there, to at least make it the 155.
Listen, I'm good with any modification and adjustments you want to do to that budget. I'm just trying to keep it in a position that may please pass. Because if we stay in the, if we stay in the rotation we're in right now, and we have for a long time, the outcome is not good. We're going to have an infrastructure, we have a $55 million infrastructure in town, $55 million. It's deteriorating, the same as it is across the entire country.
Yep.
If we can't maintain it, it just, it's catastrophic at some point in time.
And, and I'll tell you, you know, part of this is my fault, right? As somebody who's sat up here for a while, and we're always sitting there, and we're like, how can we make this palatable for the voters? So we'd sit there and say, and Mike's smiling, because he's, he was here too, we've had this conversation, we sit there and like, oh, let's cut everybody's budget, so we'll be, the increase will be like 4%, we know they don't mind 4%, and I think once we had a proposed that was 7%, and I voted against, I think I was the only one, and it passed. So, it's, it's kind of like reading tea leaves, is what can you propose to people that they'll, they'll somehow go for? And I don't know what the answer is, other than to keep banging on the drum and telling people, we're trying to be realistic, you know? And I think what Mike's up here describing now is one of our biggest, if you talk about like the, what did they, used to call it DEFCON 1, DEFCON 2, DEFCON?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're at like, in terms of highway, we're at like DEFCON 3, right?
Yeah, it's almost nuclear.
You know what I mean? And, and you know, the police department was just up here, we're probably a DEFCON 2, something like that, you know, clerk's office, one and a half, maybe? You know, it's like, this is the reality we're going with here, so I'm hoping people are listening. Like I, good seats are available here tonight.
We're not charging people for them, are we?
No, no, we might have to start doing that.
Oh, I'm sure when we have the meetings on Saturday, those seats are going to be filled, once the budget's out.
So, Mike, I don't disagree with anything, right? That's, you're not going to find an argument. What I would say is, I'm going to echo Bob, and tell you should probably put more in the paving, and I will tell you that you're probably shallow on your salary.
I don't disagree with both of those things.
So you need to take a look at that.
You want to pick a number now? Because it's really picking a number.
I think
Because for paving?
I'm not going to argue with whatever number you come back with.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
But I think, I think the town needs the realistic, right?
Yeah.
And what we kind of forget is that we're, as a town operator, right? We're so afraid of asking for more money, because the taxes are so high, but yet the majority of the taxes don't come to this town.
Yeah, no, absolutely correct.
So I would just say, for the reality, so that we're not keeping, coming back and fighting, and I think the line item, look, I don't want to pay more in taxes, but I also know what reality is. And the reality is that some of these roads need to be fixed. Ronnie, when it comes to safety, he needs a guy, right? I get the safety aspect of that, too. I would tell you to go back and really.
Okay, fair enough, I can do that. I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to, as you guys do with the total budget, I'm trying to keep it palatable for the people that
Don't ask worry about that.
Okay, yeah, you guys got to sell it.
Right, and you do, but you need to come back with, but this is reality. And I think some of these numbers, you know, you're trying to do the right thing by not increasing taxes, and I get that, but the reality has to also be there, too. And that would be my only comment to you.
Well, and to jump on to what your point is, to put it into perspective, right? If, if my budget, proposed budget was to pass with 100 grand,
Yep.
Right? That would give me $180,000 a year to use, for the $2.2 million that were deficient right now, that gets to 12 years.
Yeah? No, it doesn't.
Still a lot of years.
No, it doesn't, because what you haven't, no, it doesn't, because you haven't factored in that every time you go to repair something, some of those
Oh, oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about deficient right now, as we're talking
I understand that, so you're doing, I'm fixing this, and you're taking two steps forward, but the reality is
It's a half a step back.
Probably a full step back.
Yeah, no, no doubt.
So I We have to find a way to finally get to that balance.
Yeah, but I try to illustrate this the best I can, with not over-exaggerating. This, I mean, just let me go through a couple other things to drive the whole budget home. When I, when I became road agent in 2007, my highway budget was 365. It went backwards for, I don't know, seven or eight years, right? So, if you do the normal, and you try to do this, and this was one of the conversations we had 10, eight or 10 years ago, try to increase your budget a minimum of 2%, minimum, right? So, to make it to the 405 where I'm right now, that was $38,000 increase over 15 years, that's just over half a percent a year, has been the increase to get to the 205, I mean the 405, I'm sorry. Now, at 405, and I think this is good for the residents at home, because I know it's hard to break mine out from the totality of the entire budget, but at 405, at 1,900 taxable households, that's $213 a year to maintain the roads in town, per household. I've said this 13 years ago, I'll say it again now, do away with the highway department, have the residents maintain the road in front of their house for $213 a year. Ah, I don't think they're going to do it. Matter of fact, I know they're not going to do it. That snowplow it, maintain it, brush cutting, drainage, all the stuff that it takes to do that, just that aspect of a road in front of their houses, you can't do it for that kind of money. You'd be hard-pressed to plow your driveway in a winter for $213. So if I go to my proposed budget at the 568, that's $299 a year. That breaks down to $163 a week. I mean, I break, I'm being selfish, I break my little budget out for the residents in town, because it's what I need minimally to maintain roads in this town. It's not a lot of money. It's just not a lot of money. But I'll increase those two items, I'm more than happy to.
Yep.
That was really the last, and then the other ones that I've added to it were the phone and the internet, because we didn't have phone or internet.
And I know you're so happy that you have that all up and running now.
Well, you know, it's one of those double-edged swords, right? I get a lot of nice messages. I think my Christmas card count will be down, but
On TV right now, at the bottom of the screen is the phone number. Call now.
So that's the whole budget. I do have a few other things that I want to add to it, which one was the paving, right? There's two items, and we keep kicking the can down the road, and this is the time to talk about it, but I don't know how we do it. Last year, the year before, a year before that, the highway department's equipment is completely supplied by me. We don't own a broom or a shovel, we own nothing. Not a good idea, just isn't. I'm not going to tell you that buying your own equipment is any less expensive than renting it. Quite honestly, I don't think it is. But it's not about, it's not about all cost, it's about the convenience of having the town's own equipment. I'm not doing it, but I will tell you, if I had enough next Monday, when winter's coming, and I told you guys this was going to be fun, the fund's out of it, here's my two-week notice, you guys would be in trouble. You won't ever accumulate the amount of equipment that I supply for the town, you won't. I have more equipment than all the surrounding towns around here. It's not even close, what I have and what the towns have. You get to the bigger towns like Conca and Nashville, and the big boys, yeah, they have more equipment, but I have more than all the towns that are about us. But you will have to start to think about putting numbers in a budget to start buying and maintaining your own equipment. I bring it up now, because do you want to put a line item on it this year? There's not going to be any right time to do it. That's, that's for you five guys. I mean, I'm bringing it up, but it would be really for you guys to decide, do you want to do that?
Can you give a little bit of advice at this point, then, or some direction?
Yeah.
As far as a number that you think per year would need to be set aside in order to make a dent in this? And I'm not going to ask you to do it tonight, I'm saying, in the next week, come back and say
Yeah, 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 I can give you some budgetary numbers, but I think conceptually, what you should do, or need to do, is start a revolving account.
Understood.
For the highway department, and put, put it on And put, put it on a warrant, and I don't, pick a number. 25, 40, $50,000 a year on a warrant and accumulate some funds. Because at the bare minimum, you're gonna need a small dump, one-time dump, for a daily truck to do your daily maintenance and, you know, all your seasons. Plus, you can use that for a plow during the winter. You're gonna need a backhoe and/or a loader to do a series of things. And then you're gonna need a legitimate six-wheel plow with a 11- or 12-foot plow and a wing on it, with a spreader, both trucks would need a spreader. So you're probably, I mean, an international right now, spreader, plow, and a wing, you're $270, $280,000 for the one truck.
Fully equipped.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The only thing that's worth saying at this point, and I kind of know the answer is, did we put this in the capital improvement plan?
Yeah.
We did, okay. That plan, by the way, just as a side note, we need to resurrect that somehow because the intention behind the capital improvement plan was to kind of take a look at, what do we want to do over the next few years in terms of capital? And then kind of cherry-pick that stuff for Warren articles as we go forward. And that, that's the type of thing which, it's a plan, right? It's not, it's not, we just want to buy a truck. It's, we're buying this with the intention to do this, and this is where we're gonna save. So it's something that the two people who were really shepherding the capital improvement plan left town. So, unfortunate...
You're right, needs to be resurrected.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot all about it, but it ties directly into this stuff.
Right.
You know, I think, I think when I did the highway part of it two years ago, I put $750,000 in there for town equipment for the highway department. And I think on the road maintenance, I put $4 million. Those, those aren't still far out of whack. Those numbers are real.
Oh, I'm sure they're not.
So back, this will be the last thing I got for a warrant. We don't know. We'll all sell this the best we can to the voters in town, March, hopefully they'll approve it. If that doesn't pass, or even if it does pass, I gave you rough numbers on the deficient roads right now at 2.2 million, right? 17 years out. We can't wait 17 years. We're not gonna, even if I bump the number up, Mike, another 100 K. So we're at $200,000 a year for pavement. We're still probably at the 2.2, seven years to catch up to that. And you hit the nail on the head, and we all know it. Roads are failing as I'm fixing them. I think it's worth looking at putting a warrant on there for a bond. For, the town engineer, engineer and I can work up a number, whatever that cutoff is. I don't know when that is, January? Probably need that number in January.
Yeah.
Yeah. For a number to put on a warrant for a bond for the residents, and I'm just using hypothetical number right now. It could be $5 million for a road improvement bond that would get paid over, I don't know, 20 years. So it's not a big whack all at once, but at least it would give us, at least a chance to catch up with the deficiencies and then come up with a maintenance plan so we're not in that bottom of a curve.
That would be my only concern, right? You spend all that money, and then you don't have the maintenance behind it, right? And I shouldn't say, you can put a plan together, I get that.
Yeah.
But then the money doesn't follow to get it all done, to make sure that we don't go backwards.
Well, that's why the operating budget would still have to come up. You can't just do one without the other.
I get it.
But you're 100% right, but not, you can't, to elaborate on that, I think part of what you're asking me is, let's say we got $5 million.
Yeah.
You're not gonna spend the whole $5 million in three years.
No.
Because your curve will catch up to you 17 years down the road, or 15 years down the road, that everything was fixed at once, now everything's failing at once.
No, you want to piecemeal it.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's gotta be a steady transition.
Over a five-to-eight-year period, I imagine.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it more than five to eight, or is it within that region?
To spend it in five years?
Five to eight years.
Yeah, I'd say five to eight years.
Okay.
You know, and, and listen, even right now, I've got a pretty good sound plan to repair the roads that are deficient right now. I'm just, it's funding. I can't fix them because I don't have the money. I know how to go about it. I know how we need to spread it out and what it would take. But if I don't have the funding, I'm just spinning in a circle.
I think, the way I look at Warren articles like that is, let's draft them, and then we'll have a night in here where we'll take a look at the whole picture and as the five of us decide what we want to put out there. So I think, I think my opinion, one vote is for you to proceed with the town engineer and draft up something.
Okay.
Let's see what it looks like.
I agree.
Yeah, and listen, that's not an easy warrant to get passed, it's a two-thirds. You know, it's not a majority, it's a two-thirds pass on that. So it's, it's gonna take some salesmanship.
Yeah, and sometimes it takes a couple of years.
And I think you've got the personality for that.
Who does?
You.
You think I'm a salesman?
Your charm, oh, yeah.
Wow.
I see how well you get along with the other children. You do good.
Yeah, okay. Uh-huh.
See, I got a good laugh on.
Oh, that was a good, no, that was good, yeah. It was worth coming just for that.
Yeah, entertainment's free, Mike, entertainment's free.
Yeah, that's perfect. Any, I don't know, anything else? I mean, this is kind of the one, one bite of the apple. Well, it's one of three bites of the apple.
Yeah.
We got two more goes around this as we get to putting it on paper for a vote. Dan, you've been awful quiet sitting there.
I think you've laid out a good plan for us, so...
Just taking everything in until we're ready to discuss the actual budgets.
Okay.
Not that yours isn't actual, but you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm not making any suggestions until I have everything and I see what that total number is. And then you'll have no paving, so don't worry about it. It's what I'm gonna go after first.
Paving?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the easiest.
All right. I don't know. Listen, I mean it when I say it, I did this a year ago now, and the number hasn't changed much.
If it was up to me, it'd be $250,000 in paving.
Yeah, no, I, I...
You only need it to pass once, and then you don't have to worry about it.
Yep.
As far as the operating budget.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we still get, we have such a disparity.
No, no, no.
Where I'm at.
100%.
To get there, we need another mechanism.
You should be at 250 now.
Yeah.
And you're not. That's the number that I think that if you were at that 10 years ago, we wouldn't be in this position we're in now.
Would be a lot better off.
Right, so, but that number, that 250, like I said, you only need it to pass once because then it's in the default, and you have it. You know what I mean? Unless another board, if I'm not here, they're not here, decide to cut it.
Yeah.
Exactly. But it's, it's been run at such a deficit for so long, and it shows, you know? So whatever the answer is, hopefully we can figure it out and get it, so we'll see.
Well, with that, I would make a motion to accept the draft highway budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Second?
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. And while you're standing there, tree?
Tree, I'm just gonna level fund it. I mean, we can go through a whole discussion on trees and how deficient we are and cutbacks and everything, but, you know, I gotta pick my fights. I'll go after highway first.
Yeah, I hear you.
And what's the tree, what's the tree? Three, 3,500 bucks?
Three.
Yeah, 3,000, yeah, I mean...
I'll make a motion to accept the tree service budget into the general overall budget as a draft.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, just kidding. So, seeing if you're paying attention.
I do want to piggyback off what Matt said earlier. Mike, if you need to leave it, fine, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
The capital, the capital, who's gonna take that on?
CIP? By statute, it's the planning board function. And one of the difficulties, of course, is that all the players, the schools and the town get together, and the idea is to project needs so that you're not asking the same amount of money or big money at the same time. That's part of that plan, laying it out. One of the things that I spoke to Joe about before he became a selectman was, with a CIP, you are able to look at all of our capital reserves that we have, determine with the department head, when do you think you're gonna make that withdrawal? And if it's not for five years, that's an investment strategy for your trustees. Instead of these short-term things, or just leaving them getting a half percent because you don't know when it's gonna get spent?
Sure.
If you adopted a CIP that was presented to you, you're certainly not bound financially to follow through. But the trustees would have a roadmap of what, how their investments could flow based on projections by department heads. So I just throw that out there to you. And as far as a road bond goes, I, I was in a community that did 14 million. And it took three tries, but each try...
Got closer.
Made it more urgent and made the community understand what you're trying to accomplish. Your plan, tie it to a dollar value.
Yep.
And you, you can structure a loan that you only pay the interest in what you draw down. So in the first year, if you draw down $500,000 and it's a $15 million bond, that's all you're paying interest on. It's a, it's a, it's a pretty fair way to go, and it gets the road agent the monies that he needs to straighten it out. I will reiterate for the community, your job is public safety, prudent with tax laws, and infrastructure. Everything else is behind those three, and you're doing two out of the three. Not, it's not your fault, but you're trying to do the top three, and you're not getting anywhere with the third one, which is the infrastructure. But when you have a bridge that goes down, and you don't have the money to fix it, you think he gets calls now? Wait till there's detours. It's, um...
Can I mute them to turn off the phone call?
I know.
Is, is the CIP something that's been discussed recently at the planning board?
I've tried to find everything that Mike talked about. I'm drawing a blank. The person that was our town administrator.
Mark?
Mark had come up with it, and he had it so you could go into each department, and it would drop down to, I had gotten all the departments, like Mike talked about, that they put in, like Mike put in about buying different types of vehicles, the, a cost associated with them. The fire department did the same thing about different fire trucks. The other departments talked about some stuff we had put in, possibly if and when we needed to do a new town hall, a new police department, the library, and some other things we had all. So when you clicked on it for each one, what those departments had put in for their CIP was there. I have been unable to get my hands on that so that we could open that up to at least have a start. And I did ask at one of the planning board meetings about trying to get, because we have a bunch of new people on the planning board, some people to be able to get back together and form another capital improvement committee to get that ball rolling again. I will make that case again. So it's not like I haven't been trying.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things, and we talk about it here, is you're only as good as your volunteers, unfortunately. There are paid employees in town that can help get some of those things over the goal line. But we had two very enthusiastic people behind the CIP. They were pushing that ball forward, they'd come here and update us. And then when they left town, it just kind of went like that. So I don't know what we can do to kind of stoke the fires on this thing, but it's, it's really a shame that we had a lot of momentum about two years ago, and then it all just disappeared because you're just, he said kicking the can? That's what you're doing without updating a CIP, so...
Yep.
I don't know the answer, we, but, you know.
Look, I hate to interrupt. I know the CIP thing is important. Can you get Trish up here? She's not feeling well.
Yep.
Get her through, get her through her budget.
Yep.
Thank you.
Come on up, Trish. Emergency management.
Sorry.
Might need to lower that mic.
Just a tad. Okay. Okay, so I gave you a word doc to try to explain each line. Obviously, I started out with some of the funds that I have, the grants that I wrote, the sign money. Still a check I haven't received yet for $37,000. I did call Homeland Security today to get the status of that. We're still working on that. So the total for the emergency operating revolving fund that was approved via a Warren article and a vote is $226,686.24. So in addition to this, and I guess this is justifying, you know, the salary line, also I did, I had to work on ARPA with all the departments, and also another $117,000 that I got as reimbursements for various departments, highway, police, fire, planning board, things that were, their money that they spent out of their budget, but I was able to get a reimbursement. Most of it was 75% reimbursement, some of it was 90%. So in addition to what I wrote there, I neglected to mention that $117, and the $515,000 for ARPA, which I continue to work on. When I say work on, I'm required to attend meetings, most of them are webinars, and then I have to do yearly reports. So I'm still doing that, but you can see from my payroll, I'm, you know, I'm making a million here. It's about two or three hours a month on that. So if you now look at the actual line items, and I indicated each one. Equipment purchase, you can see that I put $100 in there. It used to be 300 in 2021, and then for some reason, it went to zero in 2022 as part of the proposed budget. Office supplies, you can see year-to-date is $181.47. That's because one of the things that we were able to buy via some of the ARPA funds was a printer. So this is ink and paper. And the ink actually cost me $111, so that's why I proposed. I'm just doing 120. I'm trying to recycle paper just to save money wherever I can. Payroll, we all know, everyone's talking about payroll. This is like the paving budget and the winter budget. I can't pinpoint it. Depends on if there's a disaster, is it a weather-related event? Is something Homeland Security is going on saying you need to activate your EOC? So this is kind of a moving target. We had quite a few instances last year where, or this year, I should say, where we had to activate the EOC because of storms. Also, some heat instances. We also activated the EOC for flooding incidents. So again, that's a moving target. Also, the first few pay periods of the year, you were paying two people for this position, so that's reflected in this. I actually extended out, including fringe benefits, the pay right to December 30th, averaging 30 hours a week. Now, that being said, it could be a little less than that. And if we don't have a weather-related event, it won't get more than that. So again, it's kind of a moving target. And I did include a raise. In, since 2009, I've had a total of, I want to say it was $5.50 worth of raises to right now. And I'm proposing what the employment, what is the title? Employment, security, wage. I included that sheet for you. And I only did entry-level for disaster preparedness, emergency plan procedures, dealing with hurricanes, floods, and so forth. So I did go from that, I increased it, what is it, $4.77, I think? Other expenses, the clothes... Other expenses, the clothing, that part of that is clothing on other expenses because I did buy one winter jacket, one high-visibility jacket and a vest, which there was never a line item for that, for the clothing. Telephone decreased, so it was $1,000 on that line item because you paid for a phone for somebody. I don't have a phone. So I decreased it down to, I want to say I put 100 there just for miscellaneous expenses. Right now, currently Seabrook pays for my landlines in my office. So that 124 that you see was outstanding from the beginning of the year from a previous person. Training, I decreased it. You can see by $200, there was 500 in there. A lot of the training I can do now, a lot of it is remote. Some I do have to go to, but Homeland Security is pretty good about trying to get free stuff out there. But I did leave a little cushion just in case. Grant matches, you see my opinion on my write-up. Every single department should have a grant match. Police, fire, highway, even our tax collector. Because if I can come up with a grant and there is a match, there's no line item for it. And I think in my explanation, I put a dollar in all those lines so that, the way I understand it, if it says zero, we can't put money into there. So I did put a dollar in, and really all departments, we should look at that. Radio repairs, you can see that the purchase there was because we had to buy a radio due to extenuating circumstances. I can't see us needing another one. We have that and another one that got returned. So I bought a used one for this price and then another one that got returned. I can't see us needing too much money in there. However, if we do, I do have my message board sign money. If it was more than that $100 you see in that line item, I could use that for a repair if I needed one. Same with vehicle maintenance. We have the Hummer and we have the Impala. We should have some money there. So I did it at 300. The bill that I'm waiting for, I'm going to pay out of my sign money. So that's why it's not reflected here. And I thought I'd have it today, but maybe tomorrow. Postage, I think we've talked about postage. For the most part, I don't mail stuff. I drive to people's houses when we've got issues where a lot of it was based on people that needed PPEs and letting them know, you know, what we've got, what we don't have. So I didn't mail letters. I drove to people's houses. Fuel, we added this account. It was never here before. Internet, we added this account. Again, as you all remember, we were told to.
So on that one there, Trish, you got budget, a dollar, and then you have variance, 100.
Yes.
So was that supposed to be 100 for the budget?
Right. So on the fuel line, you mean?
No, on the internet.
Oh, on the internet. So I put a dollar because, so here's the thing, and the fire chief and I have talked about this endlessly. We don't know how to determine, how do I take his bill and decide how much
No, you don't. He pays for all the internet. You're not going to split the internet.
Well, that's why I put that there because he and I talked about it. We thought, well, I don't know, do I pay 25%? I don't know.
Yeah, no.
So that's why that's there, just as a precaution. Travel, right now, I'm not doing any travel. There was, I think I wrote in your thing, there used to be $400 in that account. Actually, there was 500, but it was reduced in 2022 to zero. Again, if sometime I need the training and I have to drive someplace, I'll take the money out of the sign money. I probably should mention that, and I'm almost done. Last year, I won't look at Jim, he'll give me the ax. Last year, we did spend $37,177.69. The proposed budget last year was $67,156. So you probably should, you can see that the proposed last year, obviously it failed, but we also spent still $37,177. And what's that, about $27,000, I think, my proposed budget than last year. So, any questions? I should probably say that also a lot of my time is spent, and Mike already mentioned it. I do help all, any department that calls me for grants, I do help them with that. So I do spend time. Grants typically come through the Homeland Security site, so I usually am the first eyes to see it. You've probably noticed that actually on my timesheets. The first thing I do every day is see what comes across the board, what do I need, what's potential for us? And read the emails Homeland Security has about what's available. So you probably should know that as well.
We talked about you getting a sidekick to help you with that, right?
I don't know about emergency management. We talked about conservation, helping with grants, and I have somebody probably.
Overall, with all the grants.
So then we need to come up with another position.
That's fine. Grants mean money.
It does, and we've done really well.
Like Mike talked about.
Yep.
Very important.
Yep, we've done really well in the last few years, so knock on wood.
Any questions, anybody? Everybody good?
Mike looks like he's thinking.
Mike's thinking about
He's thinking about something.
I'm talking about Mike behind you.
Oh, this big Mike, okay.
He's waiting to help you to your car.
Oh, dear.
Could I move to accept the draft EMD budget into the overall draft budget?
Seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Two items, one done. Kind of help add to Trish's thing. It is important on the grants. Listen, I get them. Trish and I will talk back and forth. I'll give her the meat and potatoes of the numbers that it takes to do it. And I'm not going to lie, I don't have time to do all the administrative stuff for a grant. Trish does all that. And that's key. Because if that doesn't get done, what I put together doesn't mean anything if it's not submitted. So that's huge. For my department, I know that because we work on them all the time. That's it for that. Housekeeping note, back to highway for one second. I don't know how I missed this. Because a lot of you guys are bottom-line guys. You go through the bottom line. The bottom line in the highway department total is wrong to date. And I didn't pick this up till about an hour ago. I didn't do this report. At 4:05 for my operating budget this year, you take the year-to-date expense, which is 364, from it, that's $41,000, not $63,000. And out of that $41,000, October and November's expenses are not in there. So that number is realistically about 20 grand as we speak. I'm only bringing that up for housekeeping because if you're going through this like this, you look at my monies that are still in my account to date.
Right.
That's misleading. Really, instead of 63, you're probably at 20. All right?
Right. Yeah, oh yeah, because you still have a month and a half.
If I asked you to project where you're going to be, how big of a deficit by the end of the year?
Wish I could answer that.
Depends if it snows tonight or not.
Tonight or in the next five, six weeks.
Yeah.
That's the variable that I don't know.
Fair enough.
And that's the reason, if you look at the sand and salt budget that I proposed, last year I didn't use as much sand and salt, right? The year before, I exceeded it. I was $37,000 in sand and salt.
Right.
That's another one. You could look at it in a snapshot and go, oh, he didn't use that much. Cut it. Not a good one to cut.
No.
Thank you.
All right, I believe our town administrator is up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have the honor of presenting four fucking budgets tonight that I've been staring at for a week and a half, day and night. And you know, in 2022, every minute of institutional history walked out the door. And without institutional history, you don't know the rationale behind spending. And you really don't understand, without looking at the history in detail, why things were expended a certain way. Before I begin, I'd like the board to know and the community that anything that I say is not intended to be a criticism of predecessors before me or the way business was done. These are simply my observations and I am filled with frustration not having answers that I customarily am able to give a board of selectmen. There are a number of lines within the budgets I'm going to present that three or four different departments benefit from, but it's not in their budget. I say that because members of the community will often ask, what does it cost to run the police department? Oh, I can go to the police department's budget. Well, wrong, because general government might have their maintenance in here, their electricity, their water. That's part of their operation, but it's not there. I'm not suggesting we change the universe tonight, but you should think about parsing out all expenses related to a department to that department to get a true sense of what it costs to run. So with that being said, general government buildings, the first item is alert now. We know that works because Trish used it for the Seabrook exercise. You can see zero has been expended. And let me preface this by saying, I spent hours with Peyton. She graciously gave me some time. She's established a bit of institutional knowledge, but not a lot. That should have already been expended by now. It's just, so we have to track down where the invoice is, why we didn't get it. So there's a lot of legwork that's going to be done after this. I characterize this as a scramble, right? It's the best way I can describe it to you. So I level funded that, assuming that we'll be okay and they're not going to turn it off. They would have already turned it off, right?
Right.
Okay. And you know, that's the reverse 911, so we let the community know about emergencies, et cetera. Chemical toilets, they're at the park and at the beach. Although we only expended, and to Matt's point, let's follow that line from left to right. The budget was $3,600. We expended $2,510. The balance in the line is $1,090. There should be no perens there. That means deficit. There should be no perens. So maybe some of the things we could fix this year when people get in place, in the coming year, I should say. Drinking water, there's been explosions. I could tell you at the town hall, everyone's on a diet, so they're drinking a ton of water. Except for me. That being said, I'm still trying to track down why the amount is so high. I know that by instinct and reaction, people might load up and put it in storage just to have it in case they don't get what they want all in a year. So I suspect that may have happened.
Does any of that go into the transfer station too? Because I know
I have not seen the transfer, I have not seen the transfer station on any of the detail as to where the deliveries were.
Yep.
And it's hard when you look at the detail because you don't know whether it's the rental of the machine or the water itself. It doesn't distinguish that.
Wait, you said cases of, we're not getting cases of water, right?
No.
You get the five-gallon jugs.
You get a five-gallon jug.
Yeah. No.
I don't know if they get bottled water at the transfer station?
Yeah, it's a bubbler. They have
They get the gallons.
A bunch of five-gallon water bottles at the transfer station?
No, I believe they have bottled water down there, don't they?
No, they had bottled water during like a heat emergency when they didn't have a station.
All right, I'm just making sure we have bubblers and we're not
Yeah, no, they have bubblers, yeah.
I can tell you this year, we learned that the Butler Building doesn't have potable water and they didn't have a dispenser for water. So we ordered one and put it there. And you're getting jugs now, Mike? Yeah, that's probably one of the most crucial places you want to need it in July. And they now have it.
So just out of curiosity, the heat wave that we experienced, is that, did we start buying bottled waters for people? Could that have been part of the?
No.
No?
We were switching over at that point and they didn't have
Oh, and somebody was without, so you guys bought bottled water.
Yeah. So the volume has gone up by adding additional departments.
Is that a contract that we have right now with those folks?
Dumpster, as you can see, we're probably going to be right on target. The department heads of the safety complex approached me earlier this year and asked for permission to go to the contractor for a second pickup per month. They were only allowed one and they asked for two because they were overflowing. And you know, with dumpsters, that can bring rodents and things like that, depending on what's thrown in it. So one of the department heads called the vendor and got a second pickup per month.
So there's one there, just one?
Yes.
There isn't two there?
One.
Just one.
One. But it's picked up twice a month, right?
Correct. It was once a month, twice a month. There's only one care.
Electricity, huge mystery. Huge mystery as to why that number is so high. And here's why. We've been in that consortium through the Rocky Hand Planning Commission for a couple of years, I think. We got new rates in November that the board approved, which are even less. So I'm in the process of tracking down why this electricity bill is so high. And I don't have an answer for you right now and I apologize for that. Quitting purchases, I spent a little more than half. We're asking to level fund that at $400. Summer maintenance, you can see that we over expended there. I think that was primarily due to a callback invoice because of the beach needing a second run-through before we opened it to pick up sticks and debris that were all over the place. Thanks to Joe, we looked at the contract and spring and fall cleanup include soup to nuts, not just mowing the lawn. You've got to pick up everything, including sand, by the way, that sits outside the front door here. They've been advised that that's going to be, the feet are going to be held to the fire for that because it's really important that that gets done. It's a safety issue right now. Winter maintenance, you can see that we're right on target unless, of course, we get a storm between now and December 31st and then we're in trouble. So the next line is called improvements. I wish I could tell you what they were. Because if you go to the bottom of the page, you have repairs and maintenance. I would say that's redundant, but I don't know the history of the rationale as to why that was created. An improvement is maintenance, right? Unless an improvement is considered like an addition or some other constructed aperture to a building. So we reduced that by $5,000 just because I don't know where it's being spent. Internet service, I wish I could have let off, even though I don't have the numbers. In 2022, the Board of Selectmen told every department head, you need to start budgeting in your budget for telephone and internet. Fair?
Right.
So they did. And in 2023, in March, we were given a default budget. Guess what didn't make the default budget?
Internet.
Internet. And telephone, because it didn't survive one cycle in the budget process. You couldn't put it in the default, so we stopped taking it from the cable revolving fund and put it in the budgets that went from a dollar value to zero. So everybody's struggling. Thank God it's not a lot of money, but people are struggling. I don't know if you want to rethink that. I don't know if we want to reach out to the Cable Committee to see if they can cover us for another year in case somebody's really desperate. But I believe they covered IT too, right?
Right.
Okay, IT. Oil, again, a mystery. But if you look below oil, there's propane. I suspect that the invoices were coded from Hafner's at the time, all to oil when some was propane. And as you know, we switched vendors from Hafner to Palmer and got saved like a dollar a gallon. It was really a good deal. It was really a good deal. And as soon as Palmer can make us a delivery, we'll see an invoice that reflects that savings. Repairs and maintenance, $58,000. We're at 55 now. And we're going to level fund that. The only thing that I think I would like to do is, beginning January 1st, have the facility maintenance tech be responsible for that line. And anybody that has a need that would normally be automatically put to this line needs to go through the maintenance tech. That's how we control it.
Right.
Because I'm standing here before you tonight, presenting this budget, but I could tell you, a number of departments hit it on a regular basis. And I don't know about it. So if I'm presenting it, I've got to know where the expenses are going so I can speak intelligently about it. And I'm not saying it's malicious, it's just been a practice. So I want to get my arms around that. So we're going to have the maintenance tech, Mark, be responsible for that line. Any department that needs anything related to maintenance, go to Mark. Because he'll have the current balance, he'll know what can be done. And might I also suggest that we establish a threshold, you as a board, of what dollar value you want to limit tapping this line. Whatever amount you set, say $3,000 or $5,000. Anything over that, let's go to the town buildings capital reserve fund with 200 something thousand dollars in it. And that way, you'll keep your operation and maintenance in line. But significant expenditures or anticipated expenditures should come from that revolving fund that hasn't really been tapped as far as I could see. So I ask you to think about that and just establish some sort of dollar value that triggers moving away from the operating budget and hitting the capital reserve fund, over which, by the way, you have control. Security systems, you can see we're slightly over. I'm suspecting that was to revamp the panic buttons that exist in the town hall. I asked where they go, and I was told it goes to the PD. I asked them to consider making it ring at EMS because by the time the police get here, we'll all be dead or in need of medical attention. So it should really go to EMS. I'm half kidding, but to be honest with you, it should go to both places. You know, we're going to need all help we can get if something happens here.
Is that the one that we have a contract for a couple of years or another year or something like that before we can switch it over to the system the police and fire use?
To respond?
No, I thought we were under contract with this particular company for another year or so. Because we want, didn't we talk about going to the same system that the police and fire use?
Yes, we did. Yep. And we are in a different contract. And when the contract expires, we're going to try and get some uniformity in the town.
Right.
We all can't be going for the same product or service to different vendors. It really doesn't.
Makes no sense.
And you know what, to be honest with you, it's hard for department heads to let go because they might have an established relationship where they get a deal or they can count on a quick turnaround for any request. So those relationships are important, but so is central purchasing. Because when you buy in bulk, you get a discount. It can be parsed out when it gets here. But the purchase needs to come on a big truck to one location, and then we'll feed the departments what they need, whether it's copy paper or things like that. And I don't know the list, but central purchasing is pretty much the way to go. I don't believe you need a purchasing agent because the volume's not that great. It's just all the department heads getting together and saying, what do we purchase that's common to one another? And then make a list and then run off of that. And it's not always town hall that has to say because somebody might have a relationship that's better than the town halls, and that's the vendor we would probably go with. The next line is telephone, as you can see, zero in the budget, spent 512. So we are 512. That should be in perens because we're in the hole. That's a negative. So we're asking a level fund, well, level funded close to the expense at 520. Supplies, we've only hit it for half, we're going to level fund that. Storm order and well testing is $15,000, zero expended. However, I am aware that we have an obligation to property owners around the transfer station to test their water as a result of some sort of formal agreement the board has made with those residents because of possible contamination. I do think that we have hit that. I know that they were out there, I know they did the tests. We get calls regularly from the resident, property owners saying, hey, it's time just in case it slips through the crack. There should be some expense associated with that function. But here you have yet to date, nothing. Some of these things can be very easily explained, they're miscoded. As an example, we're going to get to that next. Primex, we have workers' comp through them, we have unemployment through them, we have property and liability through them. I wouldn't be surprised when somebody got an invoice from Primex and they were new to municipal government in the town, that even though it was those three components added up into one invoice, they coded it to one line. It's the only thing I can come up with. So you're aware, we received from Primex information that indicated that property and liability will be going up 17.8%. It's about $8,820. Unemployment is up 5%. Let me get to my budget, hold on. Workers' comp is going to be up 14.6. And that's it. So when you turn to other general government, you'll see what we're talking about. And while I'm at it, and I have the paper in front of me, received information from Health Trust indicating that those benefits that we provide our employees are going up 15.6%.
Yep.
So health and accident, again, I believe this is a miscoding. It's almost double what the appropriation was. And I didn't know what that was because health and accident, I thought we got from the Health Trust and Primex. It turns out this is the supplemental insurance that we provide police and fire for basically the functions. Something I said?
You're afraid of it.
Don't give me anything, give me a call.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
So as you can see, property and liability, zero was expended. Inexplicable at this point in time. Even the detail does not reveal where it was expended out of. However, I suspect if you go two lines down to workers' comp, that may have happened as well. So these need to be revisited. And what I did was, I took the actual expenditures that I'm aware of and put the dollar values for the proposed 2024 budget. And that's health and accident at 7,200, property and liability at 58,370, unemployment at 1,400, and workers' comp at 38,500. A lot of this is based on experience. And we did have three workers' comp claims this past year. Hopefully, we won't have any more. One of the downsides to being a small community is you're in a group with very big towns. And we are small potatoes. Typically, the higher rate increases will come to the smaller communities because they're in less of a position to go elsewhere. It's kind of a fact of doing business. I did sit on the board of directors and learned that, sadly, that that happens. And it's, they do that in order to keep the larger volume towns rate as level as they can or make their increases modest.
Kind of discriminatory though, isn't it?
I've actually heard of communities being asked to leave the group because of their experiences that they have costing too much money. They're losing money by having you in the group. So yeah, communities have been asked to leave. Again, the Health Trust says 15.6%. I did that for dental, health, and short-term disability. So you can see we've over expended on dental. And I increased that to $11,220. So this next line, it's FICA, it's FICA. It's 7.65% of payroll. It's a combination of two different things. 6.2% is social security, 1.45 is Medicare. It's universal, everybody knows it, and it's driven by payroll. So I've decreased that line from the budget of 74,200 to 62,261. But now I ask you to go down two lines. Skip health, and we see a separate line for Medicare. I'm not sure why that is, if it's part of FICA. However, there's been money budgeted, there's been an expenditure. My best educated guess is that FICA only includes social security and Medicare is broken out two lines below it. Health insurance, that's the third line down. The budget was 141, we spent 124,000. And based on the proposed increase, I've asked for, in the 2024 budget,
So I have a question on your FICA and your Medicaid and everything else. If we're giving wage increases, are you following that into your budget for next year?
No, because I don't know what they are. But you should know, anything that is wage-driven is going to change. And if you're going up and you're going to be providing pay adjustments to the employees.
That's going up also.
All the numbers are going to change.
Yep.
Okay.
New Hampshire State Retirement, the budget was 258,774. We've expended 193,818. Oh, and may I just say this, pennies frighten me. You're talking about a budget of millions. Do we need to have 88 cents in our budget? Either round up or round down, but get rid of the pennies. They're just, I'm sorry, this.
Makes sense.
No, it's, it's sometimes used, and I'm not saying that this is the case, to show just how good we're budgeting and how good we're spending. We're right to the penny. I'd rather be right to the dollar, round it, so we can just keep track of what's going on. I've lowered that to 220. I think the difference may be related to vacancies. But even at full staff, it's not going to hit that amount of the 258,774. So in 2024, I'm asking, assuming a full staff of 220,000. Short-term disability, as you can see, we're a little bit high on that. I don't know of anybody that has taken advantage of that program, but it's going up 15.6%. We get it through the Health Trust. So I'm asking in 24 for 4,368. The next budget is legal. The expenditures against a $50,000 appropriation are 18,890. I lowered that to 40,000. We're trending to not using town council that much. Outside of unique personnel issues, oftentimes you can find an opinion that was asked two years ago, and you're asking the same question today when you really don't need to. Go find that opinion and use it. Because if the circumstances are the same, you don't need to pick up the phone. The next page is street lighting. The budget is 20,500. We've expended 16,839, 840, excuse me. We're going to lower that based on the trend to 20,000. General pest control, that is our routine pest control, is budgeted at 32, excuse me, $3,250. We've already expended 3,850. They were here again today. Excuse me. And I'm going to bump that up to 4,000. There are mice that are passing away in the ceiling. And as they expire and rot, they stink. Robin has a candle in her office. We actually called our regular vendor on a Thursday, and they said, yeah, we'll be in next Wednesday. I told her, call somebody else. And they came right out, they found one of them. But it's back again, and it's in her office. And unlike the rest of the first floor, they have a drop ceiling so you can go up and see. She's got plaster.
Plaster.
Using a sawzall to find where the mice are up there. But you only did a hole big enough for your head, right? Because once you get your head up, you can look around with flashlight.
We did make WMUR a couple of years ago, you heard that?
Oh, I saw, yep.
You went more regional than that, you were on News 10 in Boston.
I know, I drove, I'm not afraid to say this, I was driving by, I saw the news van out here, and I kept driving.
Yeah.
I'm like, I don't know what that is, I'm going home. And I found out it was a mouse in the ceiling, and I was like, thank goodness.
Took forever, yeah. Took forever to get those ceiling tiles.
You could Google it, it's pretty comical, yeah.
They caught it in a bucket, I think.
Oh, my word.
So the next, under pest control, we have the West Nile Virus Treatment. You know that dragon mosquito, they've been in town for quite some time. I understand that this might be a sensitive subject based on things that have happened in the past related to mosquitoes. I'm not about to change that. We spent 26,600 out of the 35 budgeted, I reduced it to 27,000. Please keep in mind for the future, mosquitoes don't know town boundaries or lines, so they're not going to stop and not come into Newton because we have dragon mosquito. They're going to keep flying in from all around us. Just food for thought. Excuse me. The next, one, two, three, four. The next four are principal and interest on debt that we have. The fire station is ongoing, and as you can see, the principal and interest is broken out. 40,000 principal, 56,895 interest. That's wrong. That cannot be right. So we are looking into that right now. I'm working with Robin on that. The next one is a fire truck lease that was paid off last year, so we don't need any money this year. These three, the truck lease, the rescue pump, and the SCBA, that's self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters.
Yep.
I'd like to see two separate budgets. Principal, below that, the interest. And they have to coincide by account number, not the prefix, because that'll be a different number, it's a different budget. So there'd be a budget for all of the principal that you're going to pay, and then another budget for all of the interest. And you'd be able to follow it by the suffix number. We can't track these down, I can't tell you, I can't find a schedule. I looked today. It should be in the annual report. It's not. It's not a big deal. We were scrambling last year to get it out. I'll go to last year, two years ago, annual report, see if I can find a schedule of repayment. Because that'll call it right out till it's matured. So that information is available. But you want to break out principal and interest. The community needs to know how much we're doing in interest based on the rates that we get. And a lot of times, it's favorable because you do get good rates. So it's a good reflection on the board of selectmen. So I'll have some numbers for you hopefully by next week.
Do we, do you have the dates of those when they're paid off? Do you happen to have them or no?
I think they should be available. You have to have a repayment schedule.
Right. And also, what do you think the reason that those three items are not in the fire department's budget?
Because they are debt. Debt the town incurred based on warrant articles, not a request from the fire department. Moving on, the executive budget. The first line is advertising. The budget was 15,000, the default budget, I should keep saying that word. The default budget was 1,500. We spent 708, leaving a balance of 792. Should not have perens. We're going to lower it to 1,200 for 2024. Consulting service, 1,500 budget, zero expended. Should be 1,500 left over in the line without perens. Excuse me. I asked for 11,500, which is a huge, huge jump. I don't predict the future, but I do know that you're probably going to need some help in the year to come, the coming year. And rather than trying to find money throughout the budgets, especially payroll, because that's where it tends to land. If you have a line, this would be a town-wide thing, not necessarily just executive, but it's the appropriate place for it because then the town administrator can keep an eye on it and manage its expenditures. Dues and subscriptions, the budget was 49, default budget was 4,900. We've spent 58.60. We're in deficit, the 9.60 should be in perents. I asked for 5,800 for 2024. And by the way, based on the lack of my knowledge on the specificity, I did go back to the actual expenditures for 2021 and 22 by line, so I had some frame of reference. But I think all the departments need to put their foot down and say, don't touch my budget. Nobody touched my budget, come to me, be territorial, it's yours. And I'm not saying everybody's hitting everybody else's budget, but at this point, I don't know. I just know general government buildings, which we just did, takes a huge hit. Office supplies, we are not over-expended despite the number. We budgeted 3,500. It shows an expenditure of 4,661. That will be lowered through a journal entry. An invoice was miscoded to this line, so we will not be in deficit. And I've asked for level funding to 3,500. Next line is other expenses. The default budget was 450. We've expended 961. We are in deficit 510. I've asked for 1,000 in 2024, based on historic spending. Another mystery coming up, postage. We budgeted 200, we've spent nothing. And you also see, I think in the finance budget, we've also spent nothing. I don't know how that's happening. And I don't want to hear about Pitt and Eboz, because I don't want to be here till 10 o'clock at night.
I wasn't bringing it up, you guys keep bringing this up. I didn't bring it up once, now it's him and you.
I didn't look at you.
Just saying.
I think I recall something last year that someone said they made a purchase of a lot of self-addressed envelopes.
I have seen those, actually.
They made a huge purchase, because that was brought up, and someone said they made a huge purchase of.
And I have seen them. I think Pitt and Eboz is the way to go, not only for the discount that you get, it's also for management and control, absolutely, really. So we will have to explore that. In the salary line, I am assuming that that is comprised of the town administrator and the executive assistant. So I left that close to 160, that's reasonable between what you're going to end up paying Robin, and for every you recruited a town administrator, you're going to be close to 100. I think your last contract was 97. So that's what people will be looking for. Part-time staff, we put in, the default budget at 2,000. We've spent 160. Peyton told me what that was for, but I cannot remember at this moment in time. But we're going to keep it level funded at 2,000. Telephone again, this budget was the victim of the default. We budgeted it at zero, because it was not in the previous year's budget in this line. We've expended 412. We're in the hole 412, but I've asked for 420 24. Town report was budgeted at 1,450. We expended 706, so we have a surplus of 744. Last year Diane made an executive decision and reduced the number of copies that we requested because people weren't picking it up. And as long as it's at the town library, that's our institutional memory for generations to come, to just go there and look at it. I was speaking with a member of the Board of Selectment, and I told him that my experience is that you have boxes at the polls, and when people come in to vote, they can go to the table, grab one and leave. They won't make a special trip here to get one. So despite the reduction in the number of prints, we still have some left over. But again, if we go to the polls, they'll fly off the shelves, so to speak.
Yep.
So I've lowered that to 1,000. Training is 500, we've expended 125, 375 left over. I can't tell you what the 125 was, I really haven't seen anybody go to training out of this building. So we're going to level fund it at 500.
Hey, just a crazy side note about the town report. If that is the intent, remember that traditionally we get them shipped here, voting's at the fire station.
And that's why we have a facility maintenance tech with a two-wheeler.
Right, I mean, I don't know how long that's going to take them. Maybe it makes more sense to have them shipped to, because Chief El Cadenio, I'm sure, will be more than happy to store them there.
I like to take a box myself and leave it here, and I wouldn't mind lugging them up to the polls on that one day. Although they're not hurting for space. I also want to proof it before it goes out to the public. The last line in this budget is travel, we budgeted, the default budget was 250. Expenditures were 65.50. We have 184, 185 left over, we're going to level fund that at 250. So I do want to share with you that you have a number of employees in town who use their own vehicle for town business. We should be paying them mileage. It's not a crime that we're not. An employee shouldn't, it shouldn't cost an employee money to work here. So, I mean, I know Trish drives all over the universe all the time, she does not submit.
Well, Mark also.
Mark does not either.
So if I remember correctly, she had the impala listed in there for maintenance? I thought we got rid of that.
No, it's been repaired.
We gave it to her to be able to drive around town.
We checked the car out.
It's currently being repaired.
We got rid of the Crown Vic.
The Crown Vic.
That was used by the Fire Department for extraction training with the jaws of life and things like that.
The impeller is being repaired right now.
Okay.
The impeller is being repaired as a transmission issue.
Yeah, it's been a month now, just so you know.
Who's working on that?
Without benefit of an estimate before going in. So, I mean, I'm hoping the department heads will take the bulbs, light the horns, and do what's in the best interest of the town, not necessarily what we've done historically. And I've been encouraging that. The next is financial administration. The auditing budget, it's budgeted at 23,015. We've expended 1,723, so we have a surplus of 52.92. We are expecting more invoices before the end of this budget year, because the audit is not completed. With that being said, it's my intention to invite them here when the audit report is done, and have them give you a presentation of what they discovered. Typically, if there are concerns, they send a management letter to the town administrator. He, in return, puts together a remedial action plan to correct the issues that they've identified, and then both of those get published as part of the report. So you have a concern and a response to the concern, so it really doesn't look like we're ignoring things that were raised in concern.
I think that would be a first, I don't think that that's ever been done.
What?
Supposed to do it every year.
No, not the audit, but coming before us and making a presentation.
They came before us last year.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, then I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
The next item is Avatar Support, 9,579 in the default budget. We've spent 98.72, so we are in fact, 301 should be in perents in the hole. This is an item that I wanted to share, because I just learned about it. The town clerk's tax collection is supported by Avatar. When I see Avatar, I automatically think of assessing, and they do use them. The building department also uses Avatar. This is an example of why it doesn't belong in this budget, but should reside in those other budgets. Again, just food for thought. I don't want to turn the world upside down, I'm simply making suggestions as I see them. Equipment lease, we default budgeted it at 4,476. We spent 4,046. We have a surplus of 430. We're going to budget that at 2024 for 4,500. IT consulting and support, 875. We spent 874. We are a dollar under-expended. We're going to do 875 again in 2024 as a request. Office supplies, 900. We've expended 1,690. We are over-expended by 790. We're going to ask for 1,300 in 2024. I believe that the increase is to, or was, to buy supplies that have really been not bought. They've just been flipping manila envelopes over and ripping the tag off that was there. That's fine to do, if it's going to sit in a file. If you're going out to do business, you don't want to have a label on the outside. It doesn't look very professional. Plus, the prices of supplies are going up. Remember, that's a default number from 2022. Payroll services, 400, excuse me, 4,825. We've expended 4,141. We have a surplus right now, and we still have three more pay periods before the end of the budget year, so we'll probably exhaust that line. We're going to ask for the same amount next year, 4,825. Postage, 1,268, zero expended. I'm going to reduce that to 1,100. Again, the self-stamped envelopes and things that, I mean, I saw, but it didn't register with me. But again, it's indicative of loading up before you end your budget year last year, and not needing to spend money in this year. So, pretty straightforward. Salary administration, 57,294 was the default budget. We are expending at a rate of 83,472. We are in deficit 26,178. I believe that the bookkeeper that is currently in place, her bill, the bill from MRI for her services, is being charged to the wage line. I think that that's a matter of convenience. I wouldn't charge anything but wages to a wage line. We should probably have another line for consulting if we know we're going to be in that. I put 85,000, that is the max that you authorized to go on the ad for recruitment.
Yep.
So that's why I use that number. Deputy Treasurer and Treasurer, the next two lines, they are level funded. I will meet with Lisa to see if she would like to change those numbers consistent with the Board's request of, tell me what you need and how you want to treat your employees. Last is training, 190. And we've spent 69. We have a surplus of 121. We're going to turn that over to 200, because I anticipate with new employees, they're going to need training that may be in Concord.
Let me use my shock look.
And out of town. Professional development, a lot of times, people can't free themselves up to leave. You have to make time to leave, to get current. It's not uncommon in communities all across the state that when a legislative session ends and all the bills have been signed by the governor, many of them impact local municipalities. We don't know about it, no one told us.
Right.
So in some respects, you could be operating in an antiquated fashion, or something that's inconsistent with the law. There is a legislative update that comes from the Municipal Association. My intent would be to distribute that to all the departments, so they can look at what the impact of the legislative session was on municipal government, specifically their area of expertise. We did get one that I shared with you guys today. And of course, we didn't know that, right? But that's good information. And the packet that they sent out came in September. I was just getting around to reading, and when I saw that, I said I should let you guys know. It's from a firm, Leslie Sewell, sound right, Sewell, Leslie? And, you know, it's about 25 pages, but it covers every aspect of municipal, how it impacts municipal government based on the prior session. So it's a good read. And again, I'll firm these numbers up, and I apologize. I just, I don't have the history, so it's very difficult for me to share information with you. I wish I had it off the top of my head.
One question, the salaries over here trustees, it has 750, it's in brown. Is there any particular reason for that? If I'm correct, I think the trustees are getting 400 a year.
Say that again.
The salaries under financial administration of the trustees?
Yep.
It's highlighted in kind of like a brown over here. Any particular reason why it's highlighted? And I think the number, the number I think should be 1,200, because they was voted a couple of years ago that they would increase to 400 a year.
The number that I have for the 2023 budget was a carryover from 2022 as part of the default. If there was a change, I don't know whether it'd be a board decision or a warrant article.
There was a warrant article that was passed.
When?
Last year or two years ago.
So if you look at the 23 budget carried over from 2022 as a default, that number was wrong in 2022?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter if it was voted on.
No, no.
If it was a warrant article.
Right.
But it won't get picked up until.
It's mandatory, I got it.
Yep.
And quite frankly, if it was a warrant article, it should have been included in the default.
Right. Yeah, but that was my point, is that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's quite enlightening.
So one last, I have one thing for you. Going back to your first budget. You don't have to look at it, this is just food for thought for you. So that electricity, you're trying to figure it out. There are organizations out there that will do an audit, and they will go back in time. You split whatever they find as far as cash, but that's one way, so you're not drilling down and spending a lot of your time. They can go back and do a full audit on that over three years. Let's say they found you 10,000, you're going to get 4, 5,000.
Electricity, but my focus was street lighting. I know that the state had a program, maybe 2012, 2013, where they decided to cut down on what they considered redundant lighting in every community in the state. They only left street lights on at intersections. Everything else, they pulled, turned off.
We did that 20 years ago.
And I also understand that there was an action by the Board of Selectment to turn out lights too, as a cost-saving measure. That's part of the problem. I, for the life of me, can't understand why Newton would be responsible for street lighting on a state highway 108. It should be a state expense. And I haven't had the time to dig into this with all the other things that are going on, but given the 7,000 increase, it's probably worthy of a hard look. And I'm familiar with those companies too much.
Okay, I was just going to offer help, if you know, that's fine, I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Do we want to make a motion to accept these drafts budgets? That was my motion, anybody want to second it?
Second.
Seconded by Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Thank you, at some point in time, I'm going to rely on you and your expertise to tell me who are the most knowledgeable people in town besides Joe Simone about what accounts exist at the bank down the street. There are pennies in here for projects that were completed but not entirely expended. And it will compress the document and make it more business-like, but it will get rid of the dribs and drabs that exist that are really not worth it. I've done warrant articles before, it's basically to dissolve, and wherever you want the money to go. It can go to the unassigned fund balance or up to the bottom line. It can be transferred to another capital reserve fund. Typically, the amounts are not that great, but it's really worthy of a hard look. I also noticed that we have a cemetery, but there are also private cemeteries in town. We are holding money in this bank for the private cemeteries, and I think you should give it to them as quickly as you can. We just don't want to hold it.
Jim, I'll volunteer to work on that with the cemetery people and with the trustees.
That would be helpful. I just, if they're privately managed, they really should get the money, because they would use that money for perpetual care and things that are necessary, that are consistent with what people expect when they buy a lot. So that's just a thought. And I think this also holds true for the revolving funds that may have lost their usefulness. That's another sheet of paper that's about this size in terms of accounts. And I've also spoken to the treasurer. It is, is my experience that treasurers are in a unique position to interview banks and find out what we can get, the biggest bang for the dollars that we're going to deposit. I know it's convenient, but in this day and age, there are courier services that take away that distance issue that we may have. And it's, I think she's going to explore it, I just don't know when. So with that, just. And it's, I think she's going to explore it. I just don't know when. So with that, just, I'm done.
Thanks.
How are you doing my stuff?
Because I can. I was looking to see if this was over there.
Out of curiosity, how many more department budgets do we have left? Are those?
That's, that's it, I believe.
That's it.
That's what I thought.
I've touched on all of them at this point.
Right, right.
And you, you, you folks are going to have to come to a consensus on what you want to do on wages.
Yep, yep.
You, you have seen, by the way, the different amounts.
Yep.
And percentages that have been applied. You've seen as high as 26%.
Yep.
And as low as level funded. So there's a big range there for you to be looking at.
Sounds good.
So next is the invoice for Fence Pro. And what is this for?
Greedy Park.
What's that?
Greedy Park, not the Fence Pro station.
Greedy Park, right.
Okay, that's the fixing of it.
We should move on about fences before Dan gets back. I would propose that we take it out of the capital reserve fund for government buildings or town buildings. It's not a building, but it's town property. It has buildings on it, and it's to secure the integrity of the field, which is why the fence was, the gates were put up, I guess would be what you'd say.
So I'm going to move to instruct the trustees of the trust fund to withdraw three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars from the town buildings' capital reserve funds to pay the invoice from Fence Pro.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Joe, you're up.
That's his assigned.
Get my voice ready? I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents from the police special detail checking to pay the invoice from Wex Bank.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to approve and to manifest the amount of nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents with a pay date of November 21st, 2023, payment made through Card Member Services for various departmental charges.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve and to manifest the amount of one hundred forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents with a pay date of November 21st, 2023. Payments include seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars to Eastern Seaboard Concrete Construction Company and forty-three thousand fifty-two dollars to Norwood Environmental Services for payment for household hazardous waste day.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixteen cents for pay period October 5th through the 18th, 2023, with a pay date in November 22nd, 2023. This manifest includes eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents in opera administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve and accept the public minute, minute, excuse me, the public meeting minutes dated November 8th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, about the minutes, did we just do the minutes?
We did.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into non-public?
I would move to go into non-public under RSA 91A C?
C, right?
I think it's C.
C, reputation?
Reputation, yeah.
Well, actually, it's B, hiring. I wanted to update the board on the interview that occurred today, this morning with Peyton and I, with a candidate.
So B sounds good.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody clear out.
At this point, the board is now going into non-public, and we will close the meeting. We'll adjourn at the end of the non-public. Thank you for everybody, for attending the meeting.
Thanksgiving, everybody in the TV world.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.
You just need a.
Step right up, young lady.